So I think it's really important for LPS to have a strategic plan in order to like improve in the future for like younger students and students going into high school in order to improve their learning and their choice on where they go and what they do.
I think it's important for us to have a strategic plan because what better way to plan for the future and for future students than do this? Like educational wise, it's gonna be very important for us to have this and just for everyone to be prepared for the future instead of worrying about now.
I thought it was important because we need to like talk about what we want to improve on our schools. It was important for me because I've been all around the world to all different schools.
It's everyone's ideas, it's not just ours, so we can listen to what other students think as well as our own ideas.
I feel like it's important for students to have a voice so that it's not just based on what teachers think is best and that it's based on what students think is best as well.
I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for December 13th, 2016. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Momgard?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room if anyone wants to take a look at that, and we do have one set of minutes for your approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved, and that takes us to Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success. And I'd like to start with this. Students and educators in classrooms across our school district come together this time of year and throughout the year for a wide variety of outreach, giving, and good deeds. Our student celebration this evening highlights one of the many generous activities at Lincoln Public Schools. As part of the broader community outreach program at Irving Middle School, Irving Science and Social Studies teacher Kate Larson presents her students with something called the Acts of Kindness Challenge. Kate is here with several of her sixth grade students to summarize their acts of kindness, service, and effort stories, and I will ask Kate to introduce her students.
Good evening. My name is Kate Larson and I teach sixth grade science and social studies at Irving Middle School. This year I have incorporated into my classroom effort stories, and with those stories, an expansion of Acts of Kindness challenges. My students and I have brainstormed many different ways to make someone's day through our acts of kindness. For our second challenge this year, I coupled it with our school's annual fundraising and community service project that our amazing Irving Parent Teacher Student Organization Group puts together called Irving Community Outreach, or ICOR. Our ICOR fundraiser gives all students of Irving the opportunity to complete service work in our community for a span of three weeks. Students in turn raise funds for their dedication of time to help our school. Our parent group offered numerous opportunities for students to sign up for projects. We called it our Acts of Kindness slash ICOR Challenge. I challenged all of my students to serve at least one hour of time, conducting as many acts of kindness as they could. I am in such awe of my students' amazing ability to reach out to the community and help others. They blew me away with their countless acts of kindness and ICOR projects. It truly is wonderful to be an Irving aardvark. With 90% of our team's 6B students participating, they together completed 246 hours and seven minutes of service and acts of kindness out of 826 hours served by all Irving students, and they raised just over $1,160 out of the $80,000 total for our school. Today, I am so proud to have with me some very inspiring students who will share their stories with you and how their acts of kindness ICOR Challenge made someone's day. I have with me today Grayson Anderson, Nick Urban, Maude Kilmer, and Adriana Ambrosio. Enjoy these aspiring future leaders' warming stories.
Hello, my name is Grayson Anderson, and for my hours of service, I helped out at Foodnet for two hours on a Saturday morning. I did it with a couple of friends and I had a lot of fun. At Foodnet, we unloaded food from the cars that donate and deliver to the site. Then we put food on the tables where it belonged, separating items like dairy, meat, fruit, and so on. After we had finished putting out the food, we let everyone choose one or two items from the tables depending on what table it was. When I was at Foodnet, I saw a lot of people that were very happy about getting food. At the end of this challenge, I felt really good about helping others because I want to make our world a better place. All it takes is to show others that you care. It can be something as little as donating your time. I think this challenge made a big difference in our school and in our community.
Hi, I'm Nick. For my Act of Kindness Challenge, I did about six and a half hours of service. Everything went pretty good except, and there weren't any problems except for some allergies that I had. A lot of these hours were from raking leaves, and while raking, I discovered that doing little things that make, little things makes people really happy. A few people even offered me money, but I turned them down.
Hello, my name is Maude. For my Act of Kindness Challenge or my ICOR project, I started off by working at the firehouse number eight. I was there to wash their fire engine, fire truck, and their ambulance with others. We finished early, so they gave us a walk around the building. I learned that helping out people for free makes you feel better than doing something and getting paid for. It felt good to help others. I also worked at the Sheridan Library twice. There, I made clocks for the first graders and took down posters from the book fair. Doing this, I know that I helped someone and made them happy for giving them my time. The librarian at Sheridan was very busy around the media center, and I just helped her by becoming less busy. I have even further plans to volunteer soon at the camp house with my mother.
Hello, my name is Adriana. For my Act of Kindness Challenge slash ICOR, I made birthday cards for the teachers in our building. It went great because I was able to meet some new people on Team B. It felt really good after making cards because I knew that the teachers will appreciate the effort and time that I put into those cards. I have a strong feeling that they are going to love them. I also went to the Sumner Senior Center to make Thanksgiving cards with the residents there. It went very well because after we were done, I felt very good for giving my time and effort. The seniors appreciated the hand turkey that we made because they said that they don't get a lot of visitors. My friend Sage and I made friends with Olga and June. At the end, they both thanked us for our time, and they also had a big smile on their faces, which warmed my heart. Lastly, I donated 20 cans and boxes of food for the Center of People in Need. This made my heart light up because one time in my own life, our family was having struggles with money. Having food on the table was hard for my family, so I know what the families that are in this situation are feeling. I just hope that giving this food to the families will help them or at least give them the chance to have one meal a day besides the food at school.
Now, do our students have some family here for support? Would moms and dads and families care to stand and be recognized? Thank you so much to our students for participating in the Acts of Kindness. Thank you to you, Kate, for your leadership. All of you students, you made a difference in somebody's life, and that's a very good thing. But also, thank you for coming and taking time out of your evening to come and share this with us. Really appreciate that. Any comments from board members? All right, thank you guys very much, and congratulations on your good work. Next, I would like to recognize Connie Duncan.
I would like Lorinda Rice to come forward, please. Board, this is in the form of a motion. I have also gotten to know Lorinda very well, and I am very proud to say that she is an awesome art liaison. Thank you. Fabulous. Whereas Lorinda Rice, Curriculum Specialist for Visual Art in Lincoln Public Schools, has been honored with the State Supervision Administration Award by the Nebraska Art Teachers Association, and whereas Lorinda Rice is respected among her peers across Lincoln Public Schools, the state and nation for her work to advance, promote, and support art education, and whereas Lorinda Rice has worked to create more opportunities for students and staff to share their work and display their work, and whereas Lorinda Rice is respected by art educators across the state for her leadership in art curriculum and professional development for teachers, and whereas Lorinda Rice has woven her talents of teaching, leadership, and passion to have a long-lasting impact on students and teachers. Now therefore, be resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Lorinda Rice for having been honored with the State Supervision and Administration Award by the Nebraska Art Teachers Association. Congratulations. Connie, and the board, I'd just like to thank you for this recognition. I'm honored to be able to support Lincoln Public School art teachers and our students. Gets me every time. Where students can explore their creative instincts in classrooms, where the possibilities are endless, where we can navigate complex and sometimes overwhelming problems to find solutions, where we can allow them to process information in their own individualistic ways, and where we can develop understanding about our world and make meaning through their own experiences. The Visual Art Department has developed e-portfolios for students to showcase their learning, not only in the art world, but in their other curricular areas, so they can make connections as learning develops K-12. We're excited to see this grow and develop as we move forward. I love the art teachers in LPS. They are working very hard by bringing artists in to visit the classrooms. They're giving students opportunities to display their work outside of the school, in our public areas, Lux and the libraries, all of the different locations. We have teachers who are giving our students real-world applications. Jocelyn Reese, who you're going to be honoring here in just a moment, is having students create art to be submitted for the Nebraska by Heart exhibition, and they were accepted. So she's giving them that real-world opportunity. Another tireless, and I could go on with lots of stories, but I just want to take one more moment to tell you about Lincoln High Photography Teacher Yvonne Meyer, working hard to create an excellence project at Lincoln High School, to help students understand and recognize the strengths that they bring as students in our community all through and around art. We are excited to be a part of this community and excited to give your students the opportunity to express themselves. Thank you. I did ask Lorinda if she had anyone to introduce tonight, and she said that she was going to hurry to go see her son's concert this evening, so she does not have anyone. But does anyone on the board have anything to say?
I just think it's touching how much you clearly care about the work that you do, and thank you for that. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Kathy?
I'm the second. That much.
Discussion? Seeing none. April, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Momgard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to recognize Kathy Danick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew. Would Jocelyn Lipincott Rice, please come forward? And hopefully I said it right. My German teacher would have said "the I" is how we pronounce it. Thank you very much. And I'll get it correct. And I will make this in form of a motion, but before I do that, as I read through the profile, you talked about being inspired by a former LPS teacher at Meadow Lane Elementary. And art is one of those things that people show in a whole lot of different varieties, some doodle on paper, some doodle in their heart, and some doodle for the rest of their life. You inspire a lot of people, and I greatly appreciate that LPS fosters the environment, art teachers, music teachers, as well as our curriculum needs that we have to deal with math, writing, science, but this is the one that gets the heart, so thank you. Whereas Jocelyn Lipincott Reese, an art teacher at Lincoln North Star High School, has been named the State Secondary Art Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska Art Teachers Association, and whereas Jocelyn Lipincott Reese is well-respected at Lincoln North Star High School for her commitment to educating students in her classroom, and whereas Jocelyn Lipincott Reese is noted as a strong supporter of her fellow teachers at North Star and throughout Lincoln Public Schools, and whereas Jocelyn Lipincott Reese believes in professional development at a local, statewide, and national level through her involvement in professional learning communities and conferences, and whereas Jocelyn Lipincott Reese understands the value of art as a means to tell a story, especially the stories of her students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Jocelyn Lipincott Reese for having earned the honor of State Secondary Art Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska Art Teachers Association. Signed by Board President Don Mayhew and Superintendent of School Stephen Joel. Congratulations.
I would like to thank you all for the honor of your recognition this evening. It has been my greatest professional pleasure to work with Lincoln North Star High School with students and staff, as well as Nebraska Art Education Association. Moving up to teaching high school came at a very small price to me, and that was really, I had to learn photography to teach it, and what I learned was that it comes down to essentially light and time. And I believe this is simply the premise of education and learning. We all require the light of others, their knowledge, care, experiences, and perspectives, as well as the time to properly develop. Art education as an academic area allows for the critical thinking and important skills to be developed for students, critical reflection, respectful disagreement, the time for students to develop and amplify their voice. And while I appreciate this individual recognition and your accolades, I want it to be known that I am only a reflection of the light of all of those around me. My students, my colleagues, my admin, Lorinda, my district, my family and friends, my community, and I thank you. I thank you all for saying yes to the arts. And I think you were going to ask if I can recognize something?
That's where I was headed.
I would like to recognize my parents, Janet and Jerry Lipincott, are here with me, as well as my sons, Amrock and Hawk Race.
Welcome. All right, there's...
Mr. Mayhew, that was in the form of a motion.
Got that. Lanny?
Second.
Discussion? April, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Momgard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
And now we have an update from our friends at Prosper Lincoln, Brian Sek and Rich Clausen.
Well, thanks for having us. Last time I was here was about a month ago with Lincoln Suicide Prevention Coalition giving an update on that, so thank you for everything that LPS has done around suicide prevention also. We've made some incredible strides. Today, I'm here to talk to you about employment skills for Prosper Lincoln. I started that position in March when Dr. Joel made my stomach drop to my ankles when he said that he was going to hire somebody else to do the job that I was in before. So he called me on my LPS homeless outreach cellphone, which I have, which I had, and now another person has with Dr. Hicks and federal programs, and he said, "Brian, come to my office." And that's bad because that's cutting through like eight levels of management for superintendent to call directly to the homeless outreach specialist, and I go to his office and that's what he said. He said, "Brian, I think we're going to hire somebody else to do your job." So, you know, there was a pregnant pause in there, so I had enough time to think about how I'm going to tell my wife that I got fired and how I'm going to apply for jobs before I come home, but then he said, "I want you to work on this Prosper Lincoln job." So I work on Prosper Lincoln on employment skills. Lincoln is an interesting town for many reasons. One of them is, we have all these employers over here saying, "We can't find jobs for our people. Our jobs pay $40,000 to $50,000 a year with benefits. Why can't we find people?" Hospitals, Nebco, Lincoln Industries, Timco, all these places. On the other side, you have all the people that I've been working with for the last five years, case managers and struggling families saying, "We can't find jobs that pay more than $9 an hour." So there's a disconnect between the people working these jobs and the employers trying to hire. The Prosper Lincoln Employment Skills effort is simply building a bridge between those two things. In my mind, we're working on three things. It's awareness, soft skills, and training. People don't know about the better jobs. If you're a single 27-year-old mom with three kids working at Party City on North 27th Street, right by North Star High School where Jocelyn's from, you don't know that if you got a CNA in a year and a half, you could have an RN and be making $45,000 a year at your choice of hospitals. You don't know that, you're just getting by. The key question is, how do you reach out to people who are already working but working the wrong job? We can backfill those jobs with high schoolers. We can backfill those jobs with other folks. Party City is not meant to pay for a family of four. That's not what that job's meant for. How do we get her over here? So the first is letting her know about that. So first, we're recruiting the bossiest people I know, retired LPS teachers. So we are recruiting retired LPS teachers to volunteer at city libraries starting in February. We're going to train them up to know the job sites to look for jobs, how to apply for benefits, and if it's anything more complicated like VA, benefits, or disability, how to make a referral. People go to the library looking for jobs. They open up a browser on the computer. You do not need a library card to use the internet, and they type in jobs. When you do that, jobs that will not turn into a career come up first. People need a little bit of guidance, so we're going to do that. The other thing that we're doing is partnering with Dawes Middle School and North Star and soon-to-be McPhee Elementary. At Dawes, we had employers come in and speak to the students about jobs that are available here, tech startups, manufacturing, and human resources-type jobs. Now, next this month, students from Dawes are going out all around the community to visit these jobs, but there's a catch. We're educating the students, and they're important, but the parents are too. So after the instrumental concert at Dawes Middle School on December 21st, it's going to, they'll release out, and there will be a job fair waiting for them outside of the auditorium of all the jobs that they went and visited. We do not need to reinvent the wheel in Lincoln. We need to improve the resources that we already have. We're educating caseworkers and employers to bring them together. If you're an HHS caseworker, you have 300 to 400 people on your caseload, which means you're focused on getting them a job, not the job that will end poverty for them. So we had a job fair, and I don't like job fairs normally because they don't connect to people. This did. We had caseworkers and 17 employers. Anywhere between 5,000 to 7,000 people in Lincoln at any given time have case managers. This isn't a bad thing. These are people who are refugees escaping from domestic violence, people returning from corrections, youth coming out of juvenile detention looking to start their own lives. It's connecting the resources that we already have to end poverty. If you move that single mom working at Party City, and 18 months later she has an associate's degree in nursing from Southeast Community College, poverty is over for her. There is no such thing as a poor nurse, not in Lincoln where every single hospital has signs outside that say $10,000 signing bonus. So my message to you as the school board is, we are connecting resources, and we are doing that not to reinvent the wheel, but to make it to where mom can access that full-time job, to be in a career, and be successful. Thanks.
I'm Rich Clausen, and I'm the ambassador for Innovation and Entrepreneurship for Prosper Lincoln, and I'm glad Steve Joel didn't call me and say he was going to have somebody else do my job. I retired actually after a 30-year career as a partner in the firm Bailey-Lawerman back in May and took on this opportunity when it presented itself to me, and I can tell you, every day that I have been on this job, this career, new career, I failed. I fail every day, many times a day, and that's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. And I'm also a lifelong learner, and I'm always continually learning, wanting to meet new people and learn new things. That's something that I think we should grant everybody the permission to do, is to continue to learn, continue to fail, and learn from your failures so that you can only get better. And so I'm thrilled to be able to work with people like Brian, Michelle Suarez, who also works with the Early Childhood Development pillar of Prosper Lincoln. But this community agenda, as Brian said, is really to lift everybody's boat in the city, and I can tell you right now, I've met with over 300 different people and organizations, and I've found no better organization than Lincoln Public Schools that really wants to raise the level of excellence for the students and for the community. I thought what I'd just give you is just a quick update of, so what are we doing with innovation and entrepreneurship within the city, and more specifically, how are we helping to impact the lives of the young people who are in our public schools? The overall aspirational goal for this effort, for my effort with Innovation and Entrepreneurship, is to create a world-class ecosystem that has a vibrant culture of innovation, but it allows innovation and entrepreneurship to permeate the entire city, and we want the city to be the white-hot epicenter for this ecosystem. It's going to be a regional approach, but we want Lincoln to be a clear focus. We have some very, very simple objectives, and I'll read them off to you, and I think you have them before you as well, but the most important objective, and the one that I'm going to focus on, is to make sure that we have connectivity, and that's something that you heard Brian talk about. This is not about reinventing a wheel that we're trying to discover fire or anything like that. We want to connect people with other people and with initiatives and things that are going to help move this city along and elevate everybody's game, but we want to help especially students to connect with innovation and entrepreneurship within the city because that's going to be the future economy that's going to grow Lincoln and the region. And how are we doing that? So one of the things that we do is we go out and we do a discovery phase, much like what you've done with the strategic planning process, where we talk and we have conversations, and we find out what are the tensions that are at play in the market, what are the disruptions that need to happen, and then how are we going to define success moving forward? And really, it comes down to four things. The first is talent. How do we discover it? How do we recruit it? How do we develop it? And how do we retain it? The second is collaboration. How do we get people to work together for a common goal and a common good? Third is mentorship and internships, and that involves students as well in terms of offering them an opportunity to see what it's like once they graduate from high school, and if they do or if they don't go on to achieve a degree, whether it's two or four year, what is it like to be out in the business world? And then finally, it comes down to capital and commercialization, so understanding what it takes to run a business, the kind of money that's needed, and taking an idea just from concept through to launch. Launch is one of those words where we talk about, we want to launch and iterate, launch and iterate, keep getting better. So what's happened so far? Well, one thing that we've done is we have an event that's going to be coming up on January 12th at the University of Nebraska, and it's going to be a reverse pitch competition. And what I mean by that is, we're going to have an auditorium out at Nebraska Innovation Campus filled with students in computer science and engineering in that department, and they're going to be standing, they're going to be sitting, watching as seven Lincoln businesses pitch opportunities that exist for those students, whether it's internships or jobs in technology. If this works, and it works well, and I believe it will, we want to spread it to other colleges within the University of Nebraska system, plus we want to spread it to Southeast Community Campus. College, and Don, and Wesleyan, and Concordia, and other institutions of higher learning. So, that's one idea and one thing that we've tried to do in terms of collaborating with the public and with our higher education. So, what are we doing with K through 12? And I hope I'm not misspeaking when I say that we've had an opportunity to present a concept to Dr. Joel and his leadership team where we want to use a program that was developed by the Gallup Organization called EP-10, which tests and evaluates the propensity for young people to be innovative thinkers and entrepreneurs, to be builders, to be makers. They want to make things. They want to do things. And we want to do that for every student of a certain grade. And we're looking at, I think, we came in thinking, gosh, maybe it's juniors. But then, through the wise counsel of the executive team of Dr. Joel's, they said, "No, we think it should be younger. We think it should be maybe ninth, tenth grade, going into tenth grade." It was a great idea, and the Gallup people believe that as well. So, what we want to try and do is to institute this evaluation, this testing. It's like a Strengths Finders but for kids, and help kids uncover and discover, "Gosh, I can do that for a living," or "I could think that." Yeah. And then it'll help prepare them when they sign up for classes and they're going through their curriculum for the rest of high school, and if they choose to go onto higher education to pursue a degree. We want to do that, and it's going to take money to do it. And that's my job to help raise that money. So, it's not money that's going to come out of Lincoln Public Schools or a budget. But that's talking about growing the economy of the future, and I think that's really, really, super important. The other thing we're wanting to try and do is to connect more businesses to education. And so, anything that I can do to help connect the business community, the entrepreneurial community, innovation and technology to our public schools, I'm wanting to do that. And then finally, just the overall idea of identifying and recruiting and developing talent, and anything we can do to help the schools do that within the classroom and outside the classroom, we're happy to do. So, with that, I want to thank you for your time. Thanks for the awesome opportunity to work with Brian. So, Dr. Joel, thank you for relinquishing Brian of his previous responsibilities so I get to work with him every day. Thank you very much.
Board member questions? Steve?
You know, one of the things that I so appreciate about these two gentlemen, but also Michelle Suarez and Barb Bartle, who's really helped pull this all together, and the co-chairs, is that this is, this is not words. This is action, which is why we wanted them to be here tonight, because too often, communities get excited about something. Somebody has an idea, but we're not able to operationalize it. Being able to employ people of this ilk with leadership potential, including Michelle, means it's going to be operationalized, and it's going to be action-oriented, and really, Lincoln's going to become a better community. So, it's a pleasure for me, and I know for our team, and I know for many in the community to work with both of you, so thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. And Michelle, if you're wondering where she is, we did not just keep her out of this and not tell her. She is presenting to you separately at some point in a near-school board meeting, so she's on her way. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
All right. Next is when we would welcome public comment. And I do not have any blue cards. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Lanny?
We have approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Barb?
I second.
Any comments? No comments? April, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Next, we have items for first reading. Item 9.1.1, Policy 1113, Community Relations, Distribution of Community Service. Barb?
Yes. I serve with Matt and Kathy Danick on the Policy Committee, and we've looked over these policies. And we're going to go and talk about 9.1.1 through 9.1.3. And then I'll turn it over to John Neal to explain what we are looking at.
Thank you. 9.1.1, Policy 1113. And what this really does is expand what we can distribute in the community news. Think of the community news, it's the district's newspaper that goes home with elementary, middle, and high school students. It's also available online on the link on LPS.org under News, and then Community News. Each newspaper that goes home each month during the school year includes a front section of features and usually a second section that includes a theme. For instance, December's theme is the arts. We've had themes, Off to College themes, volunteers, and lots of different themes. What we'd like to do is add a third section, a section beyond the instruction, beyond the elements that people would normally read as students and parents, because the first two sections allow us to highlight our partnerships with nonprofits and allow nonprofits to describe the different amazing opportunities for students in the community that they offer. This additional section allowed by this policy change would also allow profit organizations or companies to share those enriching opportunities and for us to highlight our partnerships with them as well. It would be in an additional section, and this policy would allow us to do that.
Questions? Lanny?
John, I'd asked you this earlier, but just for the benefit of the board and the public, what happens to the revenue that is generated from the commercial advertising?
The revenue that is generated from community news goes through our resale account back into our general fund.
Seeing no other questions, this will be back to us for action at our next meeting. Next is item 9.1.2, Policy 1370, Community Relations, Use of Students for Non-School Projects. Barb?
Yes, I'll turn this over to John.
And this is a small change. You'll notice we've previously allowed thirty, third-party vendors to sell images to parents and students. They'll take pictures during, at the end of the play in costume, or at a volleyball game, or basketball game. And it's a really nice opportunity for families to capture that moment by a professional photographer. This policy has made that possible on our campus at our events. What we've added is audio. Previously, it's just been images by adding audio as part of that. And also, doesn't have to be a sale. The previous policy said it had to be a sale. This allows distribution. So, this will allow photography, video, audio, and for it just to be distributed, it wouldn't have to be sold to parents. So, it provides a broader opportunity for parents and captures more amazing moments for our students.
Questions? Matt?
I was just reviewing, I know you just said video. I see we're adding audio, and I forgot, we talked about this, didn't we? This wording allows for video, correct?
Right. Images and audio allows for, the word "images" allows for photography and for video imagery. And then the audio just adds the sound.
Okay, good. Just a reminder for myself then. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. This will be back at our next meeting then, and that brings us to our last item for first reading, item 9.1.3, the 1,000 Policy Series Updates for Community Relations. Barb?
John?
And this is a series of policies that just have very minor changes, and I'd like to highlight two of them so you have a sense of those changes. If you would look at the first policy, Policy 1100, you'll see that we've changed Superintendent of Schools to Superintendent, and we're doing that as we've been updating each series of policies as we've gone through. So, we're making some small changes. So, the policies in this packet include those small formatting changes. There's also another change. If you flip the page on 1122, this shows lots of edits, but really, it's just captioning a policy you just approved, 8410, you just approved at a previous policy at a previous board meeting. And this is just updating this language because Policy 1122 and 8410, we want to read exactly the same. They're both about how we share information about board meetings with the news media. So, these are all edits that are either very, very small, or you've already approved in some way. And we're moving them forward as a single item.
But not substantive language changes?
Not substantive.
Right, yep. Questions? All right. Seeing none, that will come back at our next meeting. Thanks, Policy Committee. Next, we have item 9.2.1, the United Way Proposal for Two Generations Family Literacy. Dr. Stavum?
Yep, but I'm going to ask Linda Hicks to join us just for a brief overview of the grant. There's been a name change in one of the programs we really value in our district, which deals with adult literacy, so she'll give us just a brief update in conjunction with the grant proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, and excuse my voice, it's failing me a little bit today. Family literacy programs began in Lincoln Public Schools eight years ago as part of a Toyota and National Center for Families Learning Grant. The grant period ended four years ago, but we've continued to support the program, and we hear from principals that it's one of the best forms of family engagement and very valuable in their schools. The funding now is blended. It comes some from Title I. We have a state refugee grant that we use, United Way, and various other local funders. And the LPS Foundation has been helpful to us last year and this year, taking on support for family literacy and helping us reach out to other community resources to help us with that blended funding. As we branch out to establish new family engagement opportunities for parents and students together, we're going to begin to use the umbrella name of Two Generation Learning or Two Gen Learning. Two Gen is a term used nationally for these types of programs, highly visible, highly optional in grants that can be applied for, and it's just a trending term that's recommended by the National Center for Families Learning as well. And so, you'll hear about Two Gen Learning. It may be family literacy. There may be some additional types of Two Generation Learning where parents and students come together to learn. And so, we just didn't want you to be confused by the terms. It's still family learning. It's still a valuable resource for us. We currently have these Two Gen Family Learning Programs at the following schools, Arnold, Campbell, Clinton, Elliott, Everett, Lakeview, McPhee, Prescott, and West Lincoln. We're expanding the second semester by adding a program at Randolph and then adding a second program at Campbell. They've had a long waiting list for the last couple of years, and we want to get those families in as well. Two Gen Family Learning is an evidence-based model, including four components. One is the adult English instruction. In most schools, that's provided by Southeast Community College teachers, or there are some other teachers qualified to teach English language to the adults. Another part of it is, of course, the students' education, and that includes our LPS students that are in our ELL programs, as well as children not yet in school that come along with the parents to the sessions and have childcare that's enriched with literacy and language. And then it includes the parent-and-child-together time, or PAC time. And then, that's when the parents actually visit the classroom of their children. They spend some time doing that each week. They have some instructions on how to make best use of, or some suggestions on how to make best use to that time. They come in with a packet that includes clipboards and markers, and teachers have some special training on how they can really make families engaged and feel welcome during that PAC time. And then there's also a parenting class for those parents, one day a week, that focuses on child development, connecting parents to resources both at school and in the community. And the parents give a lot of input into what they would like to be included during that parenting time. So, each class is a little bit different, but really makes families connect with the school, feel comfortable coming to school, talking to principals, talking to teachers. And these parents often become leaders in their schools in the following years. The majority of the costs include that teacher of English, the adult teacher, a part-time program coordinator, usually combined with another job such as the, through the CLC or another job at the school, and then that onsite childcare for the preschool siblings. This United Way grant will support the general operating costs of all of our sites. And then I did want to note that United Way also supports the program at McPhee in a separate Women in Philanthropy grant that includes family literacy and several other different models that are supporting McPhee School specifically. This grant is for the general operation of Two Gen Family Learning at all of our schools.
So, this grant is in the amount of thirty thousand, and the due date is February 14th, Valentine's Day.
Questions?
Questions?
Just a comment. Had a chance to see this program in action at Campbell and Clinton this last month. It's really neat to see parents sitting there, going, I visited one class where parents were learning English, and then as well, another class where I saw parents sitting right there with their kid, participating and helping out in the classrooms. Really neat to see. So, glad to see this happening again.
I'd encourage you all to visit.
Other comments? All right. This will be back for action at our next meeting. Thanks, Linda. Feel better. Next, that brings us to action items for tonight. Item 10.2.1, the Nebraska Department of Education Innovation Grant. Jane?
This is second reading, and unless you have any questions from last time?
Kathy?
We have approval of submission, the board approved the submission of the LPS application to the Nebraska Department of Education to support implementation of key innovative strategies meant to redefine middle schools. Grand application request will include approximately two billion dollars over a three-year period. No match is required.
Lanny?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, April, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Next, item 10.2.2, the Woods Charitable Fund Breakthrough Initiative Grant, also for second reading. Are there any questions for staff? Lanny?
We have approval of item 10.2.2.
Thank you. Connie?
Second half.
Discussion? Seeing none, April, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Now, student observers may remember that we had a third grant for first reading at our last meeting. Thank you, Matt, for catching that. We missed it on this agenda review. We did a quick check with staff, and they assured us that if we got it on our January, our first January meeting, that we would still have time to get this in, in a timely fashion. So, that's what we were going to do with that one. Next, that brings us down to informational items and reports. And is there an update from the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yes, there is. The Strategic Planning Committee met yesterday for an update on our process. We're wrapping up the first phase of community engagement. We've met with students, staff, and parents in every school. We've held four open-house community forums, met with forty-six community groups, and provided an online survey open to the entire community. That adds up to two hundred and thirty-five total sessions with over thirty-seven thousand people invited to participate, and we've received over three thousand six hundred responses.
Wow.
Within the next week, we will have our last presentation, and our online forum will shut down. At this time, I wanted to give a huge thank you to John Neal, to our facilitators, our translators, our building principals, everyone who's helped with this process, and also to my board colleagues who have attended these sessions, and of course, everyone who came and shared their voice. At this time, we'll look to move to the next phase of the process. A community study team of nine LPS members and nine community members will meet in January and February to process the information that we've gathered. As board members, you've been asked to help with the selection of the community members. As just a reminder on that, we've sent a list of people that we know have attended the fully facilitated sessions, but you are free to select others if you wish. What we're looking for is people who can put on a group mind and evaluate the data that's before them and try to see what trends are in that data and what, what does that information say? Also, Dan Cedar of Leadership Resources will facilitate those discussions within the community study team. Annie, Connie, and I plan to attend those meetings as the Strategic Planning Committee as observers of that process, so that when the recommendations eventually come to the board, we'll be able to answer questions about, well, you know, what did they mean when they said this in the recommendation? The meetings will be open to the press. They'll be transparent, and notes will be sent to board members after each meeting. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions about the process so far.
Questions for Lanny? Just a quick comment. Lanny, I know that you have been to a lot of these sessions, and in my opinion, you are just knocking it out of the park on this one, so thanks for your work on that. are just knocking it out of the park on this one, so thanks for your work on that. Thanks for all the time.
Steve's a quick comment.
Steve?
You know, Lanny mentioned 3,700 voices, and I was just sitting here having a flashback to five years ago. I think we were proud of the fact that we had right at 1,000 voices collected. So, we've tripled and probably quadrupled the engagement. I would call out all the folks that Mr. Boswell called out as well, saying that I think this, the engagement part of what we've done is unprecedented. And anybody that wanted a voice, had a voice, and we'll collate all that data.
That's outstanding. Thanks, Steve.
And it's not too late. If you haven't filled out the survey yet, it's still online. We'll be through the weekend.
Are there any reports from other board committees? Seeing none, that takes us to Career Academy. Is there a report there?
The Career Academy board will meet tomorrow morning.
Very good. And that brings us to our superintendent update. Dr. Joel?
Very, very quickly, just to tell you that we've had, I don't know, half a dozen meetings already in the last couple of weeks, just talking about legislation, talking about, you know, what we're facing in terms of budgetary restrictions. You've been reading the same information that we've been reading. We're well aware that there's going to be some sacrifices this next year, and, you know, we don't exactly have a definition for that, but we hope to be a part of the ultimate solution. And when you cobble that with all the new senators that we have coming in, they're going to have to be brought up to speed. You know, I know with John's work and Liz's work, and through GNSA and other groups, we're trying to make sure that we can get as close to a unified voice as we can, knowing full well that, you know, it's going to be tougher times ahead. And I think our board knows it. Hopefully, folks in our organization know it. We're not going to be in a position to be able to address all the things we've been able to address in the past, primarily because there's going to be some significant cutbacks. But we'll have more information going forward. And although he didn't have to be here because, he is about to go out the door, this is Bill McCoy's last board meeting, and I just want to one more time say thank you for job well done, sir, and best wishes to you going forward. I conclude tomorrow.